All right, I'm going to call this meeting of Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. The meeting will be conducted by remote participation. We're going to go into executive session and we will, if we finish up an executive session, we will not, we'll take a recess, we'll not go back into public session until seven o'clock, in which case we'll start. I'll read all this stuff again and we'll, we'll start over, but so Maria, can we have a roll call for attendance?
Ms. Weason. Here. Kathy Clancy.
She's gonna be, she's gonna be late.
Okay. Mr. Favazza.
I'm here, I'm on Route 128. You'll see my face.
Chairman Pope.
Here.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Here.
And Ms. Watson. Don't see her yet.
He's here. Oh, wait, I'm looking at Laura and saying she's here. Sorry.
Okay, so we, we have a quorum. I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts' general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purpose. As an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and to return into open session where we will finish our entire meeting. The purpose three is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and with the following units, the GTA, GATE, and food services, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
And Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to go into executive session and we won't come back into public session and any earlier than seven o'clock.
And Jonathan, just so you know, Sam is just gonna be a few minutes late, but she will be joining us in executive session and then for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, good. I'm gonna call this meeting of the school committee back into session. We had been in recess after our executive session and I will repeat the opening remarks, which is, this meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap to press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications. And to be recognized to speak. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners, and I will ask you to join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next order of business is oral communications. I almost have to put my glasses on for this. Oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the school committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. Okay, in, in that case, I am going to open oral communications and we have Mary Ann Boucher.
A good evening, Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Month Pleasant Avenue. I received a phone call this week from a woman that I do not even know. She sent me a video of the West Parish traffic. She asked if I would please speak to the school committee in regards to the video that she also sent to all of you. I'm asking you to please remedy the traffic nightmare at West Parish School. It is a nightmare, we all know it, it has been since the doors opened. There is a problem. I have neighbors, there are neighbors over there that have also contacted me, I don't even know these people. And I'm asking you, as a resident, citizen, taxpayer of the city, to please, finally, once and for all, take care of the traffic issues before someone gets hurt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone watching this meeting has any suggestions on how to solve that problem? GloucesterSchoolCommittee@Gloucesterschools.com, you can send along suggestions, we would be glad to hear them.
Yeah. Okay. I don't see anybody else with their hand raised under the attendees, so we'll move on to our next order of business, which will be the Gloucest recognition. Laura.
I want to recognize the Gloucester High School Theater Department for their amazing performance, their amazing recorded performance streamed, streamed of High School Musical Junior. It was fantastic, it was, it was just, I was just amazed and impressed by their creativity and their resilience and just bravo, it was amazing.
Samantha.
I just want to second that, I was so impressed with just the entire performance and how quickly they sort of all fought on their feet to sort of make it continue to happen, and it must have taken a lot of time and a lot of really hard work to get that right, so, all done.
Melissa.
I just want to recognize the seniors who are graduating this year, there was a great parade of seniors going around Gloucester today, so huge shout out to them, the second class graduating during a pandemic, and also thank all the teaching staff that were able to get our seniors to be graduating. I mean, it, it was a tough year and whenever we get the chance to pat someone on the back, I think we should, and our teachers and support staff were excellent this year, and because of that, we have a new graduating class and we're very excited for them and looking forward to the ceremonies that are in our new semi-normal world, but just a huge shout out.
Okay. Any other recognitions? Then we'll move on to our student advisory council and Megan is here, it's just you today?
Yep, hi guys.
Hi.
I'm gonna start off by saying that we had MCAS and AP testing over the past two weeks and it was really successful. Our ninth and 11th grade student councils will be selling shirts for the next school year for the fall. Like mentioned, that we had the High School Musical play happen this week and it was a huge success, it was really fun to watch, like after staying at the school, seeing them run around the building, it seemed like such a blast. GHS has been having outdoor classes and now we'll be having lunches moved outside, which you know the underclassmen are very happy about to get some fresh air and spend the day outside while we can. We want to say thank you and goodbye to Ms. Crisetti and Ms. Pine as they're headed for retirement. I know this year, a lot of my fellow classmates, my seniors grew very close to Ms. Crisetti because she's on yearbook and DECA, so just a special thank you to her. The junior student council will be celebrating our seniors at our graduation practice, which will be Friday, June 11th at 9:00 AM, followed by the awards night, the same night at 5:00 PM. Our graduation is Sunday, June 13th, with prom to follow on Friday the 18th, and we just got news today, or yesterday, that graduation was bumped from students being allowed to have only two guests to now being allowed to have six, which we are very happy about, all parents and grandparents, and my grandma's very excited she gets to come and watch me graduate. And then finally, we elected new officers for the executive board for next year, so this will actually be my last meeting. I don't know their last names, but we have Bailey and Andrew as co-presidents, Jenna Smith as vice president, and Nate Oaks as secretary. And then to wrap up, I just wanted to say thank you to all you guys for allowing me to have the opportunity to come here and speak, and it's very surreal, you know, I had my last day of school, I'm gonna get my senior scholarship tomorrow and turn on my Chromebook, so it's all kind of sinking in, so I just wanted to thank you for anyone and everyone who helped me the past 13 years with K through 12 at Gloucester Public Schools, so, thank you guys.
We're, we're very happy to have had you this year, it's been very informative, you've done a great job in keeping us up to date in what's going on at the high school, and we wish you all the best in your future, I'm sure you're, you'll be successful, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything?
James, you want to add something?
James Cook has a.
Yeah, sure, just as Jonathan was just saying, Megan, while you're still on, I have to say that one of the highlights through this whole thing has been your positivity, attention to detail, you know, you're bringing to these meetings, students from across the spectrum, activities from across the spectrum, right, of, of all the diversity we have at the school, the different kinds of activities students are involved with, and you've just been such a real positive voice for helping us all through some of the difficulties we face this year, and so I did, before you leave the meeting tonight, just wanted to thank you for all that you've brought, right from the very beginning and through all the hard patches in the fall, getting a little choked up, all the way through to today, your last, you know, meeting, doing these presentations, so I, I just wanted to make sure that we gave you that, those kudos tonight.
Thank you so much.
Can I just add one more thing to that, which is, thank you, James, I agree with everything you said, and Megan, you've represented yourself and also Gloucester High School so well in all these meetings and a variety of places, including this past weekend in the Boston Globe, where I saw you talking about the prom, and just to gave a great quote and a great representation of Gloucester, even in the, you know, international newspaper, so, as James said, thank you so much for your positivity and your, and your attention to detail, but also your, the way you represent the entire high school, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll see you, Megan, good luck.
Thank you guys.
We'll move on to our next item, which is the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove for further discussion?
I love that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy, well, she's not with us yet. Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
And Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Carrie, six in favor and one, one absent. And we'll move on to our deliberations on educational issues, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Lummis to proceed.
Great, thank you very much, Jonathan, good to see everybody, including the little ones tonight. So we'll give a, I'll give a short update on just how we're doing in some of the schools, just a quick COVID update, and then we'll move on quickly to Principal Cook, so he can give us update on a few things that are happening at high school, including our graduate, graduates' plans for the upcoming year, and then we'll go over a few other things about our repair and maintenance work, and close with an update on my evaluation, so let me just pull up the presentation here quickly. Kind of thumbs up if you see that? Great, thank you. Right. So, we continue to safely educate as many students as possible in in-person school settings, that has increased again this year, this, this, well, since our, since our last school committee meeting, and James will give us a quick update in a little bit about the ninth, 11th graders who are now in for the regular school day. Keep on making changes, keep on adding kids, adding, adding school time, which is great. I already, this is just our, our plan for tonight. I will talk a little about response, recovery, reinvention, just to give you sort of a, that's a, a framework about some of the work we're doing about learning lessons from this past year or so. Let me first get into the COVID update. So now we're down to six active cases across the city as of today, which is the lowest since before November 12th, that's probably an early November number, so just great news all around for the health of everybody. It's still here with us, but folks are, you know, continuing to, to take good care of themselves, take care, good care of their families. Great news, this past Monday, we had our first vaccination clinic at the school, so it was the first, first dose clinic on May 24th. The second dose for all the students who participated will be on June 14th, so the Monday before school ends. It was available at O'Malley and GHS for 12 students 12 years and older, that was for students who are in the Remote Learning Academy and any students in our schools. Use the Pfizer vaccine, of course, until just yesterday, or, no, I guess, I guess Moderna isn't approved quite yet for 12 and older. We did quite a bit of outreach to O'Malley and GHS families, paper letters, consent forms, those are translated, we emailed, we sent letters home, we texted, just did some social media outreach via the district and school, school community Facebook postings, that was a total of 187 students were vaccinated, 123 at O'Malley and 64 at the high school. We do know that more students at the high school have been vaccinated through our, the state database we have access to, so that's why, so, so, and we'll, we'll track, continue to track those numbers, but that 64 at, at GHS should be understood to be, you know, only part of what's happening. A lot of students have already been vaccinated at GHS, so they, you know, wouldn't obviously participate in this, but 123, you know, 12, 13, 14 year olds at O'Malley, it was a great, great number, very excited about that, and, you know, it worked very well, we had good support from Curitas, our, our nurses, Kylie, who's been helping with the pool testing, helped us with this today, she was a superstar, so just a really nice and well-executed job on the vaccination clinics. Our total cases right now in the school is, is three as of today, so down again since last week, there've only been three new cases since you last met, and, and those are the ones that are active right now. And as you can see, we continue to have no new cases among staff, those numbers are all, are unchanged since my last update two weeks ago. And then, so we also see some changes in our, in our COVID testing, so you'll see that the weekly numbers at both O'Malley and GHS are down, we were averaging about, oh gosh, I can't remember now, about 100 or so at GHS, and so that's down now, and we, we attribute that to people being vaccinated. Also, um, yeah, and then also, at O'Malley it's down as well, and from about 130, and so we also attribute that to folks, some folks being vaccinated also, or just, yeah, so just maybe people feeling more positive, especially at O'Malley, because, because not many folks would be vaccinated at O'Malley yet, so we think other people are just feeling more positive about it, so, that's all good. Any questions on that before we go on to Principal Cook? Okay.
Yeah, if I can just, to clarify, Ben, the numbers you gave for the vaccinations at O'Malley and the high school are just the numbers for those who are taking advantage of the vaccination clinic happening, and there are obviously students that have, through their pediatrician or other medical centers have been getting vaccinated in addition to that, so it's not the total number of vaccinated students, just the total access thing we've offered, right?
Yes, thank you for clarifying that, these are just the ones who, who got a first dose shot on Monday at the schools, yeah, and, and we're, we, we know that at GHS, there are a lot more than that who've got a first dose or, or second dose, or, you know, fully vaccinated. I don't know if the number's free tonight, but if we can, we'll report them on a regular basis. Thanks for clarifying that.
I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead, I can't see everybody.
Yeah, are we, are we tracking students that get their vaccines? Is it, does it become part of the school record, or no?
Doesn't become part of the school record, but all schools have access to a statewide database around vaccinations.
Okay.
And so, we can, we can track how many students have been vaccinated, but that's, you know, privately protected information, we would not, never share that about people, no, no staff would know that, that's just something that only nurses have access to as health, as health professionals.
So, am I hearing you correctly to say that nurses will know who's been vaccinated if, if need be, if they need to find out for some reason, or no?
I don't know if they can actually find out, I just don't know enough about the system, if individuals, you know, and I'm not really sure why they would, you know, why, why they would want to know if an individual was vaccinated, but they certainly can get numbers for the, for, you know, total numbers of students.
Yeah, I just, I know a lot of businesses are asking their employees to volunteer that information, but no, they can't obviously demand it at this time, so I just wondering if we had any, anybody that's volunteering or any, if we even ever had interest in have doing that type of outreach or not.
Yeah, I have, we don't, we haven't worked on that quite yet in terms of tracking or identifying, I, I, you know, and, you know, if I had, if I could set the rules, which I don't, of course, I would love to have us require vaccinations for COVID like we do for other vaccinations, okay, there are always exemptions for folks, okay, for medical reasons, but I, of course, don't make that call, but I, I would expect the state will come with some further guidance on that, what we could do, should do, or require to do, but that's, you know, still in the future.
Thank you.
Samantha.
I was gonna say something similar to Ben, I'm, I'm assuming the state will come up with some sort of guidance, considering, you know, families have to provide some sort of vaccine, um, information before they come to school anyway, so I'm sure they're going to have to provide us with some sort of guidance on what we should do as a school system.
I certainly hope so.
Any other questions of the superintendent? Okay. Then we'll move on to Principal Cook.
All right, thank you. So, tonight is the May meeting, where I bring some news about the initial plans of our, our graduating students, where they're headed, this information is not finalized until that June 11th day that Megan spoke about earlier, when we have students in for their, their caps and gowns, and they have a final check-in with the guidance counselors, and we, we double-check, make sure we have the information for everyone for the reporting that we do, so this is still preliminary information, and, and I'll, I'll just share some of the range of the post-secondary plans of our students. And then I'll also share the information, the most updated information about the graduation to come, you heard a little bit about it from, again, from Megan earlier, and I'll add just a couple pieces that people, I think, would be interested in, in hearing more about, and then, I think Ben maybe had included on the slide, I, we haven't met, I think, you know, since we've been full, fully back in person, so there may be questions folks may, may have about that going, other, other than, it's, it's just really great having the kids in the building and still really, the students themselves guided, of course, by staff, really following what they need to do to make it work, which has been really one of the highlights of this year. So, starting with the post-secondary plans of, of our students, this has really been an exceptional year for Gloucester High School, and I, I see it as, you know, you know, a trend that will, will continue going forward, so some of the schools, some of the schools and universities that students will be attending are Harvard University, Boston University, Loyola Marymount University out in Los Angeles, students are going to Connecticut College, Bates College, students are going, we have a student going to Cornell University, to Vassar College, St. Lawrence University up in very cold New York, we know what those winters are like from past students, so it's some, some of the range, but, you know, in addition to that, there's some specialized places where students are going, so with, from our music program, we have a student going to the Berklee College of Music, and we also have a student going to, going to Rochester to the Eastman School of Music, and we have a placement that carries a certain amount of prestige, so we're very happy about some of these lesser-known places as well, including, you know, on the, on the STEM side of things, Florida Institute of Technology and Virginia Polytechnic Institute, or others, these more specialized schools that we also have students going to. Students are going off to trainings at Lincoln Tech, right here in Gloucester, at the Biotech Academy, nursing assistant training, and as well students entering the military for, for their training as well, with particular goals for receiving training there for their careers afterwards. We have students staying nearby at Salem State, North Shore Community College, and Gordon College, we have students staying relatively close at UNH, UMass Lowell, Curry College, Stonehill Suffolk, and Simmons, and then we have students venturing much further afield, going down to Georgia, the University of Georgia, going out west to the University of Colorado Boulder, and then going very far away to Hawaii Pacific University. As I say, the outcomes for our students range from, you know, prestigious academic universities to very, you know, specialized areas, as well as to a career in technical training for their post-secondary outcomes, and I really feel that this year, as you could hear from those range of schools, in a very impressive list, and in kind of each of those domains, that the sort of education we offer at Gloucester High School, that those foundational elements, and then particularly that ability for students to specialize in, in, in certain areas, you know, at, at, by the time they're juniors and seniors, prepare them for a very large range of outcomes. So those are, are, those are the initial, you know, outcomes, some of our students are also going right into the workplace and doing things like plumbing, doing things like going into the nursing training, and then right into the workforce in nursing as well, so those plans are also, you know, very interesting, and folks who have been preparing for some of those jobs right in the workplace as well.
Samantha has a question?
James just answered it, I was wondering, um, how many students are, if they're tracking, how many people are going right into the workforce?
We do, and then that's one of the things, we don't have the data, I can't run the percentages and the numbers yet, because again, that's finalized on June 11th, which always makes our timing for meetings a little awkward, but that is data that we share with, with DSC and is published as part of our profile, so we'll, we'll be doing that, making those final adjustments to those numbers as well.
Thanks, James.
Laura.
Thanks. James, I'm just wondering if there, if you know yet, I know in the, in past years, I remember talking to Jack Porter and some people, some of the kids from automotive were going into some highly specialized, like automotive stuff, you know, trainings, or even there was even jets, jet engine training at one point, I'm just wondering if you know more about things that are specifically from the CVTE programs?
So the, the technical, some of the technical outcomes that I, I mentioned earlier, specifically naming Lincoln Tech is, that's one of the automotive outcomes, and there, the student is, what is the specialty there? So, right, so he is going for a very, you know, specialized training there as well, it actually doesn't say here, but, right, it is one of those sorts of situations that you just talked about, and then in terms of some of the trainings, you know, folks will be getting, some of that will be part of the data that we get for the June 11th, you know, update, as students are making some of those, those choices. College is a little bit easier because they have those debt, that, that, that earlier in the spring deadline that we get that information, but some of the other technical trainings really happen in May and June, so we'll be gathering that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Go ahead, James.
Okay, so in terms of the graduation bit that was, as Megan talked about earlier, we will be having our in-person graduation ceremony on Sunday, June 13th at 1:30 our usual time. Our rain date is on that Monday at 7:30 PM if we need to. Hopefully we don't, but the update, we've, we got an update near the end of last week from Desi and then another update or clarification at the beginning of this week in terms of what the changes at the state level would mean for graduations. So for us, what it means is that we will be able to provide six tickets to each graduate. And they will receive those tickets when they pick up their capping gown. And the, the ticket will be required for guests to enter Noel Stadium. We don't need to do the pre-registration that we had to do last year and that would have been required for this year prior to May 29th. The updated guidance means that an outdoor event means that the staff, staff, students and attendees won't have to, won't be required to wear masks. But we are encouraging attendees who are not vaccinated to wear masks and we're using that language directly from the guidance that we're provided. Folks who aren't vaccinated are encouraged to wear masks. The seating, because of the six tickets, we're going to be able to maintain distance between households, which is again, what is encouraged by the guidelines, but not required. So we want to make sure we're able to, to do that. Encouragement with, with the limiting, limiting the tickets, but to a big, big number. We will want to still communicate as we started today that folks who are, you know, required to self-isolate or quarantine or who are experiencing any of the COVID-related symptoms, not attend the ceremony as, as we would expect, but needing to remind people that it's not over. We still need to pay attention to these sorts of things. And then graduates will be handed their diplomas. But the school committee might be happy or, or maybe not to learn that we will not be doing the handshakes. That's recommended that we'll, we'll be able to clap for them, but we won't be putting the, putting all, everyone through the, the line of, of handshakes. And, but we will be able to hand them the diploma as part of the guidance instead of, you may remember in August, we, the requirement was they either had to get them at a different time than the ceremony or as we did, we put the, someone with gloves, put the diploma on a table for the student to receive that way. This year we'll be able to hand them. So there's some of the, you know, I think really big, big points that, that people might be interested in knowing about. We'll have some more information to come about exactly when we'll, you know, doors will open, so to speak, for people to be able to start giving their tickets and entering the stadium. We, we have to figure out kind of the, the flow of how many people we can get through out of time. So that information will be coming. And then the exact arrangement of the, the stadium and so on will be done now that we have the six, you know, we have the six person limit. We know we have the capacity for it, but we'll be optimizing the layout is, is the remaining work that we have to do. That's graduation. We're very excited. So.
Great. That's great. I mean, that's, that's huge. Six people can come.
Yeah, no, it's really great. Yeah, we've done like four different plans already. The guys just kept changing. So we're happy with this one though. This is really, we're really happy to be able to share this information today with families. So, and now with others who are tuning in here. And the third element was just the back to school. You know, full days in person here at Gloucester High School that, you know, we started on the 17th and as I said before, students have really responded to continuing with the mask wearing in the one-way hallways. Students who are in situations where classes are not, are not big enough to host all of the students at three feet have adjusted to the to the satellite situation that we talked about. We're on certain days, they're in the lecture hall, learning remotely on certain days. So students have, my, my children drew, drew the lottery on that. So they're multiple times during the day or in satellites. But, you know, made, made that adjustment to being remote for a few days, but, but still in the school. So that's been, you know, those are the things. The other thing was lunch, right? We didn't know what lunch would look like. How would we, you know, because we don't have, we have too many kids for the tent solutions at the elementary schools, right? But using the field house, using the cafeteria, students were really able to make those spaces their own, right? Really able to, you know, take these, these large spaces and turn them into more intimate spaces for friends. And then because things went well last week, we did this week, open up the area beyond the softball fence at the high school. So we have an outdoor component to lunch. So we have kids, you know, eating and then kicking around a soccer ball, throwing the football around. I think Mr. Cobb threw out his shoulder yesterday checking the football around with some kids outside. So that's been a real, you know, a nice thing and it's, and then when students leave the cafeteria, when they've left the outside area, it's just been very clean this year. We hope we, that's one of the things we can continue going forward is the student's responsibility for, you know, understanding that this is something special and, and, and it's for them and taking care of those spaces. Also the staff, you know, doing the supervision, folks who are assigned to the lunch duties have been really fantastic in interacting with the kids between blocks during the lunch times and in all ways making this work. This Thursday and Friday, next Thursday and Friday, we'll be adjusting slightly and in our mornings, we'll just be having students in to do MCAS testing and then bringing all the students in after the MCAS testing is completed. So we do have that burden of all the testing taking place within a month this year, which is unusual. It's an extra, you know, kind of tense time that usually spread out more. But again, you know, with these adjustments, we're going to make that happen and tomorrow's the math MCAS testing. In fact, that's what I'll be doing for the rest of the meeting, tuning in and helping get ready for tomorrow.
Any questions? Melissa? You're muted.
Sorry, James, can you tell us about scholarship night and how that's going to happen?
Sure, yes. Yeah, on the 11th. The invitations, Ms. Dolan, the secretary here in the office is just finishing up the, you know, finishing the reports, you know, the different committees give her the reports and we'll be sending out those invitations. What will happen is this, only the students will be, will be in attendance in the field house. So we'll have the students here to actually physically get those scholarships and those awards here in the field. That's because we have the capacity for the numbers we have. And then through Cape Town Live, we'll be streaming the, we'll be streaming the event to, to families so that although we can't fit everyone in the ways we still need to do indoor events, right, in the, in the field house. We, we will be able to have the students in person, get, physically get the awards and then show everybody else through streaming, a little bit similar to the National Honor Society Ceremony that we did a little bit earlier in, in the year.
So there's no handshaking allowed, right?
Yeah, we won't be doing the handshaking either. But we'll be given, given the awards and loud, loud applause for, for the kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Principal Cook?
I just want to wrap up. James glossed over a very important piece was when he said we've done a four different iterations of, of graduation. I really want to hand it to James and also his team. As you know, high schools are incredibly complicated places and Desi has just kept on changing the rules for our schools, but especially for high schools. And I just want to, I just really want to credit James to his perseverance, his leadership on this and then just him and his staff being able to be flexible like week by week. That's on the reopening, that's on the lunch, that's on, you know, the end of the year events. I just, you are a persistent and patient gentleman, James, and I would have thrown my hands up a long time ago with what you've been facing. So I really appreciate just, I said the other day, I'll say it out loud here is you really know how to work a prob, work a problem. And, and without that, we wouldn't, it'd be too much more difficult than it has been. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, James. And anything else?
I think that, that covers, that covers a lot. Yeah, we'll go get MCAS ready for the kids in the morning and keep that ball afloat too. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight for, you know, celebrating the seniors in this particular way by talking about where they're going next, which, you know, when we talk about that, you know, that goal, that, you know, the mission of the district and those lifelong learners, right? I think this is the, the kind of the launching for that lifelong piece are those post-secondary outcomes. So I appreciate the opportunity to, every year to get to share the preliminary information with, with everybody and at this meeting.
Thank you. Thanks again. Okay, okay, Ben, we're going to move on to the, the evaluation process and timeline.
Great. I'm going to jump in on one, one update just in terms of learning and this is a really a follow-up to, to request from the committee, specifically Mr. Favazza on, just, you know, what are we learning from this year? And I'm not going to give you those lessons right now because we're still in the process of sort of learning them, reflecting on them, learning them. But I do want to just share with, with the committee and the public just sort of how we're going about that. So let me pull up my screen again. And this is a bit of a framework that I've been working on with a few other superintendents through the SS commut, X6 community learning group. But I'm just want to share first the sort of the conceptual framework of this. It's the idea of, you know, we've been doing a lot of things, responding, recovering, and then, you know, there's an opportunity here. You know, disruption or adversity can really create opportunities. And I think we've all been thinking in some level of what is the opportunity, what has the opportunity been here? And so we want to be able to learn from what we've been doing and, and also capture it to some degree and then also see how we can, it can apply to our work going, going forward. So we talk about response, recovery and then ultimately reinvention. So this is one way. As you, what you see here is sort of a graphical representation of response and recovery. So the red part, you see the timeline at a top, beginning a year ago in March when the pandemic hit. And, you know, this is just a sort of, and then there's a response, which really means like what folks did in schools just to keep things going, basically, just to respond, respond to all the newness, all the change, all the disruption. And there was a lot of, for quite a while, just respond, respond, respond. Really, you think of it as like a reaction to things. Okay? And then there really has to be at some point in this whole process, it has had to be, you know, a growing sense of recovery. And I'll talk more about that in a little bit, but it's the idea of what do you do to ultimately return to normal, to make sure folks are getting what they need. So we're making up for learning loss, we're making up for disruption, that sort of thing. And the question really is like, when did that recovery start? You can see the concept here is that, you know, in the beginning, we have much more response and very little recovery, but then recovery grows over time. There's also a sense in this, in this approach that if you focus on recovery and response, then at some point you, you return to the status quo. I would, if you notice here in, in this representation, recovery in schools doesn't really, you know, ramp up until December 2020 or even later. I would say that, and I would really believe this deeply, that our graph in this sort of framework in Gloucester looks quite a bit different. Looks more like this. The graph, this graphic was created by me, so it's not quite, quite as, quite as good, but really we were able to start recovery much sooner because we had so many of our kids in so early in September. And, and recovery at that point was understanding, you know, what, where the learning loss was, was, understanding where they needed the support they needed. Just returning to normal in many ways was about recovery. So I would say that we've had much more quickly than many places, in fact, most places probably got into recovery work much more quickly. I think that's to our credit. And I think to, to the benefit of our students, staff and families. But there's still a question of do you return to the status quo or does you, do we take the opportunity to shift some things going forward? And you can see in the, in the concept here that there are pivotal, pivotal moments really from December, when you sort of normalize some things, you know, and things were quite normal in December, but over the course of next year. And that's really the moments where we continue to learn, reflect and then respond about perhaps we need to, we could do some things differently. If you don't take the opportunity of, of those moments, then you may or are likely to return to the, to the status quo, which, which in many cases was quite good. There's, you know, nothing wrong with, with just the status quo, but we always want to continue to get better, you know, work together to get better, as I like to say. So there's also this concept of how do you take the opportunity? And this is where in this framework reinvention comes in. And, and this just, you know, this is one example in terms of timeline, you know, where do you begin to really focus on reinvention? And what this graph is showing is that, you know, that happens a little bit by bit in the upcoming year and then ultimately you can over time, and they just have June 2023 as arbitrary deadline here or end. You know, that can grow and what we do differently or better can grow over time. But that requires that we take that opportunity in this window, really, you know, from say earlier this year, all through next year to really continue to learn from it. So that's the concept. It's a framework. Your reinvention is a nice word. It goes well with respond recovery. But I really think it more of, you know, are, how can we apply lessons learned to what we're doing in the future? Maybe not quite as grandiose as reinvention, but it, again, it's some pretty good alliteration. So the question is, well, what are we doing both on recovery and reinvention? And, and I would say that we've been doing quite a bit on this during the school year in a variety of ways, but really where it begins is by our teachers, our teams of teachers, staff, principals, service providers, ESPs, asking questions that they ask on a day-to-day basis, you know, how are students doing socially? How are they doing academically? How are they doing in terms of maintaining friends or being able to build new friends? What are the supports they need academically or behaviorally, that sort of thing? And what, what can we, what can we provide now? And then what can we provide in the, in the summertime as we talked about two weeks ago? And then what, what can we provide ongoing in order for folks to get back to a sense of normalcy, a sense of connection, a sense of, you know, learning in a regular fashion, like and progressing academically. And also I think a question that they ask is, you know, we are asking is how do we support families? And how do we help them, help their children recover as well, their children recover as well? And then the important one here at the very end, which is how do we reintegrate students? We've been doing that along the way with students who've come back into school and we've been doing that at sort of the high school level as more and more kids came back the full day. But also as kids moved in for remote. Okay? So that's another thing that will continue to reintegrate students. We have a group of kindergartners who've been in school, our schools for a year, but it never actually been in a school building. So their integration into first grade will be different than, than most first graders. So our teams or teachers are continuing to think about that. And I'll talk a little bit about the work we're doing on that and how it varies across schools and across ages. And then the next piece is reinvention, just the notion of what can we learn from this, this year? What can we learn from the disruption? What can we learn from, from what we've done and been able to do? And again, that begins by folks asking questions, reflecting on them, taking the time to think about it, taking the time to work with others to think about it. And it can be, and it's beginning with some very simple questions. What worked from this year? What have you, this, what have you done this year that you want to do more of? What have you done this year that you never want to do again? What are you most proud of? What are things that we did before that we don't need to do anymore? Okay, so important questions like that and it takes time, it takes collaboration, takes attention and then takes the opportunity to, 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 to hear those things and then figure out which ones we can apply going forward. So one of the questions is who is involved in this? And this is not, I want to just be really clear about that. This is not a grandiose comprehensive systematic district-wide plan. This is happening at school, at the school level. It's happening with teachers and staff and individuals and groups. It's happening different ways across schools, but it's happening in all schools. It's happening in different timeframes. So some schools have begun this, some schools haven't. High school in O'Malley as they're dealing with a whole lot of MCAS testing and a whole lot of just, just shifts going back into school a bit later than the other ones have. Or, you know, aren't, aren't quite here. They're not doing it fully, quite fully yet, but they will be. And they will be this spring and then into the summer, into the fall as well. So, but that's, so just to help you understand, each school is surveying staff and asking them, asking them to reflect on this year. They'll be using those surveys as a jumping off point for conversations during staff meetings or team meetings, helping them to identify some common themes. Just recently, Patty Wegman led a group of our adjustment counselors, psychologists and social workers to think about what else do we need to do on recovery? Specifically, they were talking about what Specifically, they were talking about what we need to put into place in terms of supports in special education or mental health for the summer and then also upcoming in the next year. We're asking teachers to ask to reflect with students. That's always a really important place to ask, you know, how we're doing is asking students. And you can ask students that in a variety of ways, depending on their ages. So it might be, you know, a first grade teacher asking their class some simple questions like I showed you before and being described for the class. It might be letters from fourth graders. It might be flip grid videos from fifth graders, that sort of stuff. But the idea is that teachers are asking of students what they think should could continue, should continue, should not continue. What are they proud of? And then talking among their grade level colleagues or with other other staff at faculty meetings and sharing some of what they heard and then pulling out common themes as well. And then also we'll be asking families and parents as well. I've already met last week with our district-wide parent leaders group and asked them some of the some of the questions I showed you. Got some great responses about things we could should continue to do, things we shouldn't do again, things we should reminding me of things we have to get back to. And then we'll do a June survey of parents and families, asking some of these questions as well. So we'll be able to ask, you know, smaller groups and then and then get a whole like, you know, you know, wide survey to get some input. But I do want to just say that, you know, this will be ongoing. This isn't like all being done right now. We're getting going into different degrees and different levels. We do have to just address the fact that sometimes it's hard, very, it's very hard to reflect when you're exhausted. So that's a real a real thing for our staff right now, definitely. So and then they'll use that this reflection planning, you know, for summer into the school year and then beyond for both recovery. And then also, you know, what are the things we can we can do differently as well? Let me just do one more thing, some upcoming steps to share those with you is reflection discussion. We'll continue at the school level through the end of the year, just as I said before, schools are in different places on this right now, and that's absolutely okay. School improvement plans to be presented to you at the June school meetings will have an element element of what each school is doing on recovery and some of the things that are crossing schools. I'll give you some illustrative examples of some of the lessons we're learning or things we're hearing from some of the input now our June 23 meeting. It won't be a comprehensive report because it won't be done by then. We'll use this input and other input on our planning for how we utilize S R funding. And then also, this input will help us in a long term, long term planning, which will, you know, get going in the next month or so and continue on the next six months or so. So that's just an update on the process and sort of how I'm thinking about it and how our principals are thinking about it and how we're working with staff to allow them an opportunity to share. So just a few takeaways. You know, disruption definitely provides an opportunity that recovery will be ongoing. It's not something we have finished. We've in some ways barely started it. Taking the opportunity and really learning good lessons from all we've been through requires time and thought and collaboration, folks working together about and, you know, thinking together about what we've learned and how we can better support students. And then reinvention, it's a pretty good term, as I said. But really, to me, what that means is we have to be thoughtful and planful about taking the lessons, implementing them, and then building out our many, many strengths. Also, you know, there is an opportunity here to be bold. We can, there, there, we've been bold in lots of ways and things we've done this past year to positive effect. And we can, I think, continue to be bold by really listening and learning from our staff, our parents, our students in terms of some things that maybe we can build on that we were that we were doing some of this year. So let me pause there just to see if there.
Samantha.
Patients.
Thank you. I really appreciate that you guys are putting so much effort and sort of thinking about this so holistically. I I am particularly interested in hearing from parents who have done the remote option all year long. So I don't know, are you doing any specific outreach to that particular group? Just maybe like some sort of working group or just, you know, how are you reaching out to that group? Because I think their insight is going to be particularly interesting because if you've if you've gone from September until June doing remote learning with your kid, you deserve like major kudos. And I I do feel like I'd like to know why it worked for certain families and for certain kids.
So nothing in particular with that group yet. As I said, we know we haven't really gotten going, you know, that's, you know, one of the areas that we haven't, we haven't worked that group yet, but we will. And I think it makes a lot of sense, Sam, I think you're right, you know, both our remote learning teachers and also the students and obviously the families, you know, they've undergone something, experienced something that that not a good percentage, you know, of our families have. But but it's rare, you know, it's it was a completely different level, especially K to five in terms of their their approach there than anything we did in last spring. And that's been a full school year, as you say. So I know surely that our teachers at all levels have learned a tremendous amount about how to do that well, you know, what strengths, its pitfalls. And it's much, much different than folks who doing hybrid, right? I mean, it's a much, much higher level of intensity and persistence. So I think I think it makes sense, and I'll work with Greg Bach, who's, you know, really been managing that to see if we can get not just a survey, but some real, you know, sit down with folks or Zoom call with folks to dig in with both the staff and also the families. That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Any other questions? Kathy.
Are we considering surveying the high school students? I'd be really curious to hear from them in terms of what technology has either helped or didn't work, right? Things like, you know, ordinary discussion, things, you know, things that probably are a little stunted this year because of time and and the platform. So I'd just be curious if they have ideas as to what really worked and what was really challenging. You know, they're they're at an age where, you know, they probably have some ideas as to how certain classes, right? It may not be broad over every classes, every class, but there may be some good ideas for certain classes.
Definitely. I've had some conversation recently about with high school students more related to my entry plan than specifically, you know, how this year went. But I do know that the high school has to get through a few things first, like, but they will be doing some of it. It'll probably, you know, vary, it's such a large place, it's hard things things do across the board. But I, you know, James is aware this work hasn't gotten to it yet. I think, and we, so they will be doing some reflection, definitely. But, you know, he's got to work with his teams and his department heads to how to carry that out. And it could be a combination of more of a broad-based survey as well as conversations in in classrooms as well. So they will be doing it, they're not there quite yet. James has just tuned in. Perhaps he wanted to say something about.
Yeah, 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 no, just to clarify. So, yeah, we'll be able to use some homeroom time, Kathy, to survey students. Like I said, we're just getting through this, like, you know, MCAS period and the reentry period. But that's our plan is to use each of the each each grade level has its own Google Classroom that we use to push out all sorts of things. And we've done other surveying of students, including on recent, most recently on their social emotional needs and, you know, trusted adults in the building, that kind of thing. So when we, when we're at this point, in addition to, you know, staff and so on, we'll be surveying the students as well. So, yep.
No, James was still listening in. I thank him for that. I also welcome to to sign off, but that's up to him, of course. But thanks, James. Thanks for clarification. Very helpful.
I'm double checking the MCAS bins, Ben, so that's.
I know you are, but you can also tune off.
Oh, you know, just listen, it's like having the radio on or something.
Any other questions?
Okay, great.
Saying none? Move one to evaluation?
Almost there, not quite. One more thing.
One more thing.
So but but this is really jumping ahead a little bit, but talked it through with about just something that came up at BNF that we reported at BNF. But I talked with Kathy about it, and I'm just going to share it now rather than later in the in the evening. So just some really good news. We've talked quite a bit this year about the support DPW has helped, has provided our schools and does provide. And and I think we and we report these at the open tickets and the work has been done regularly at the BNF subcommittee meetings, at those monthly meetings. But now that we're almost done with the year, wanted to provide the committee and the public with, you know, the overall results through May 14, I think it is. So you're seeing a graph, right, a table? Okay, great. So this is the request resolution, so I'm going to focus in the orange box here first. So total tickets so far submitted by May 14 were 655. Of those, 630 have been resolved. That's 96% of all maintenance or repair requests have been resolved at that point, which is a phenomenal percentage, honestly, I never would have thought it could be that high. And then also on this table and the chart here, you see the the rate at how quickly they were resolved. I'm sorry, I don't have the, I guess we have percentages here. So 239 resolved in one day, that's 38% with less, sorry, less than one day. Okay, so they're reported and resolved in less than one day. 61 were resolved in a day. 206 of those were resolved between two and 10 days. 75 tickets or or 12% were resolved due 11 and 29 days. And then 49 of them took more than 30 days. Those are the ones that have been resolved. There's still 25 tickets open, which is, you know, not uncommon at any given moment. But we'll talk about those in a moment. So a very high percentage of, you know, if you think about 239, that's 200, that's 300 tickets out of, you know, fully more than more than half or about half, I guess, are resolved in, you know, in a day or in a day or so, which is great and I'm really appreciative that those are that we get such quick response on those. You see across the different schools, the number of tickets that each different school, obviously, we have different school sizes and building sizes. So those, of course, you know, would vary quite a bit. This is about categories. So you can see just the different categories and the percentages. So maintenance in the blue here is 40%. Next highest is electrical at 18% of requests are electrical issues. We have plumbing at 16%. Sorry, HVAC is 17%, so a little bit higher than plumbing. Building grounds and then unspecified are sort of, you know, we have carpentry emergency response. You see very, very, very few of those. And so just it's helpful to know just sort of, you know, where are the pinch points? What are the things that are getting getting requests very often? Next, let me just make sure I didn't. Yep, and those are all resolved tickets. Open request as of May 14, 25. You can see that the high school is 13, not surprising, it's a bigger school than all the rest. And then elementaries have very few, O'Malley is four, that sort of thing. And then we'll look at the categories. Specifically, you'll see plumbing is the highest one in terms of the open open tickets. It has 44, 44% or 11 of the open of the 25 open tickets at this point. That's there's only one plumber on staff was available, so that's pretty typical to see that plumbing ones, plumbing are all often, you know, more complicated repairs to make. They take a little more time, also some limited staff as well on that. It's not for our plumber, I mean, the DPW plumber is working constantly and mostly working for us across all the state's buildings. But those are challenging projects. And so you see what's outstanding. And then we'll get to that in a moment. Anything just to clarify, I just want to point out to folks just sort of the nature of the requests, the scale of the quests, and also the resolution of them and how how quickly they're resolved and then also you know, what the sort of major categories are. Any questions on that? Great. Just again, appreciate the partnership from Mike Hale and his team, our custodians, maintenance folks really pay very close attention to our schools. And I think from my standpoint, do a great job working on them. You know, there are some out the number outstanding, there are some outstanding pieces that are very complicated, some leaks here and there, which are complicated to solve. They keep working at them. It's can be frustrating when things that are complicated or solved as fast as someone would like, especially if it's impacting, you know, their classroom or work area or learning area. Totally get that 100%. Sometimes, you know, these are complicated pieces and they do great work and keep at it. And we will work with them to to make sure we all keep at it. Any questions on this or follow up?
Melissa's got her hand up. You're muted.
Sorry, I usually leave it unmuted. So I don't have a question, but I just wanted to state for whoever's listening to get an understanding of why we're doing this tonight or that we are doing it tonight. We do this or the BNF Subcommittee goes through this list vigilantly every month. And the school committee has the opportunity to ask questions about the issues on that list. So I just don't want anyone to get the wrong impression that we don't have questions tonight. It's because we just reviewed the same list and got the same presentation only days ago. But there is an opportunity for the school committee to question any concerns that are on that list. And like you said, a huge shout out to the DPW because they've just been phenomenal nonstop since we created this awesome system that seems to work very well.
Thank you, Melissa. Just one thing to add there. One thing that is different for this is just the year-to-date numbers. As you said, it always looks at the open tickets and also the ones that are resolved. But we were able to provide to BNF and wanted to share with the full committee just the the year-to-date numbers.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, Papia.
Just so you know that last night they passed to do all the windows that, oh, mainly. And I signed it today, so I'll have no windows coming in. And I'll look at and I heard about, you know, the electrical shop that has a leak or working on that. And I'll make sure that gets done and rodents are everywhere, people. I know Beaman has a little bit of problems. We're going to check around there to see what's going on too. So but they're everywhere. That's just, I don't know, it's because of all the work we're doing on the roads and they're coming up. I have no idea, you know, if I did, then I'd be a great exterminator and I wouldn't be here. But the fact is, we're looking into it and we're seeing what we can do to find a solution.
At Beaman specifically, there's been a problem with rodents with one of the modulators, as we've discussed discussed before, and we'll take up again in June at BNF. There's a long standing or issues with modulators, and one of them is that they are not, some, some of them are not rodent proof. We're having definitely DPW has has gone back out there to Beaman again and again. Some success, not complete success. Not much fun.
Joel.
Thank you. I just want to, you know, credit where credit is due. Prior to the the reorganization of maintenance, I recall, I wasn't on the committee at the time, I recall hearing about it, thinking, you know, oh, my goodness, if we don't, if you know, if the school department doesn't take care of it, the windows, there's no way the DPW is ever, you know, taking care of our windows and that sort of thing. And I'm happy to say that I was I was wrong. And even in the six years of another school committee, I've watched that list, that pie chart that Ben showed that those slices showing the longer response times seems to continually gone down as I've as I've kind of anecdotally monitored prior to being on BNF. Now that I'm on BNF receiving it, you know, the report regularly. So I just want to, you know, state that my my fears were unfounded and I agree that this was, you know, the right choice for the district and the results speak for themselves. So that was important to get that out there.
Great, 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 great. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, just to put it in perspective of all the public buildings in the city, the schools account for over 80% of them. We, and when this DPW took that on, it was a huge, huge undertaking for them. And they've, they've done a great job. So Kathy?
Yeah, I just want to pile on with praise. Really, over the course of my time here, it's just been just continually getting better and better. And it could probably not be any more smooth than I think it is currently, and it has been for the past couple of years. So tremendous strides. And that report is always available in the BNF packet on a monthly basis. So anybody whoever wants to see what, you know, what tickets have been closed or what are the issues in our school that are remaining? That is public information and it's in our building and finance subcommittee packet.
And it should be said that tickets can be initiated by anyone, you know. Okay. Anything else?
All right, one, one, yes, Jonathan, we are now getting to the evaluation process. Sorry for the false starts. So I shared with the committee, I think on the 16th. My evidence. My evidence and the rubric and, you know, a copy of my goals. This is as a time, sorry, this is the timeline for a soon as evaluation process. You folks have the evidence to review and Jonathan, I may be stealing your thunder here. Do you want to go through this? I'm just, I just jumped in there, but it's really more, more your show. I think you're muted.
Got Melissa's problem here. I, I sent out today the, the, the form that is tied to the rubrics and for people to fill out and we can talk about that a little bit as we go on. But the timeline is basically that we're going to have a discussion tonight about how to proceed. And the so that the goal, the end goal is that we're going to review the, evaluate the superintendent at our meeting on June ninth. And so the forms that I sent out today are the forms that we'll use that each member of the school committee should compile. And as I was looking through them today, they don't completely align with the rubrics that you sent out. Ben, because I think some of the standards at somewhere along the line, we decided we were going to eliminate. So there are, there are more standards than we're using, I believe. If there's a problem with that, we need to, to, to talk about it. But I don't think there is. The way Ben has presented his evidence is he, he presented the evidence all relating to his goals. But in the course of presenting the evidence, he highlighted which standard it it applied to. So we have to evaluate him from on his goals as well as on the standards that are set up by DSC. And the rubric document that Ben sent out actually tells you how to evaluate each one of the standards and it's quite comprehensive. But as far as the timeline goes, I think we, it says that you're going to hand this all into me by the end of this week. I don't think that's probably going to happen. So so if you can get these, those into me by next Wednesday, I think I can have enough time to compile the summative evaluation in time to distribute it before the, before the meeting by Monday of the, before the night. So any questions in that?
Ben, it being the first time that we will have reviewed you in relation to set goals. I'm curious in the goals, you know, in the goals and the evidence you've submitted, what your philosophy and expectation is. I guess based around, there's, you know, the saying that you evaluate an employee and they've met every single goal. You didn't set the goals high enough. What are your thoughts? What is your response to that, to that? Think that's accurate? Your, your benchmark is?
I mean, ultimately, my goal is to finish the year standing. Okay, I'm standing. I think that's, I don't know if that's too low or too high for you this year. I, I think, I don't know. That's a great question, Joel. I haven't thought about it too much. I mean, I'll just as immediate response, I'd say like, you know, how well did you do them? You know, did you just sort of skate by or did you go, you know, above and beyond them? Did you just meet them or did you do them well? I think, I think something in there. I'm not sure that's helpful or not, helpful or not, but that's just sort of sort of how I think about it is you can, you can, you can fulfill a goal, you know, but then you can accomplish a goal. I'm not sure about in style. I wouldn't say that, but you can accomplish goal, you know, you know, meaningfully thoroughly, right, you know, effectively or well. So I think, I think, I think I see a difference in those two things. And what, in terms of what's helpful, I mean, I mean, just, I, you know, I'm sort of a little bit beyond your question. You know, it's helpful. I think whenever someone's evaluated, it's helpful to know what they did well and helpful to know a few things that they can get better at, you know, and so I'm open to that and would really appreciate that. You know, I do some things well and I know some things I really want to improve on. And so I'll be open about that and I hope other folks will, will help me in that as well.
And I have had this discussion with Ben. If anybody has any questions or wants more information about particular goals or what was actually done or the evidence presented, he'd be more than happy to discuss that with, with any, any of you. Just call him up and make an appointment. Okay? Any? It's a lot of work. But it's an important, it's important work and let's see if we can get it together by the ninth. Anything else on that? Okay. Or you can call me if you have questions about the, just about the process or Melissa can probably answer a lot of them. She's done ten thousand evaluations in her life. Joel?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ben, but I'm really, I'm really hopeful for this evaluation process to be a renewed process with a renewed, with a new superintendent. And so I heard you mention that you are looking for feedback that would allow you to improve in areas. If, if any of us see areas in which we think improvement might be, you know, warranted, that's helpful to you, not harmful to you. Hey, Ben, they did, you know, an okay job at this, but I think you can, you know, bring it to the next level. That's, that's a helpful, not harmful thing.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, what, what's the point of doing evaluation if you aren't hearing things that, I mean, that you, I mean, if you're not hearing the things you're doing well, because you should be, you should be doing more of those. And off, you're also not hearing what you can improve on, right? Now, how that's delivered matters a lot. Okay? All right. You know, tone, tenor, all those nice things.
I won't use the word jerk. I won't use the word bum, I promise.
No, so, but yeah, absolutely. I mean, listen, if you're not, yeah, in the evaluation process, if you're not hearing both those things, it's only half done.
Thank you.
Anything else before we move on? Okay. Committee reports. Kathy? You're the only one with the committee that met.
Okay. And I noticed that Adam Mayo is on as a panelist. So I'm almost wondering if, so we, we did talk about the task that was presented, which is can we evaluate and figure out if we can do away with transportation fees? I think Adam did a really thorough job of thinking it through. And Adam, I'll present some things, but if you want to chime in at any point, please do or when I'm done. But basically, he's done a lot of analysis. He doesn't project that we'd need an extra bus, but if we did need an extra bus, each additional bus would cost twenty-eight thousand. We asked questions about, you know, how much do we currently get in terms of transportation fees right now? And that number is fourteen thousand. So if we get away with transportation fees, it would be, you know, an additional fourteen thousand that the operating budget would have to cover. We talked about doing a short survey because we really would need to know how families would basically make choices for the fall if they'd be doing anything different. And so that's being discussed and thought about. And Adam did say that he needs decisions on things like this for, you know, sometime in June, so he can plan for September. I believe all the information he had presented to us was distributed to the full committee. Adam, is there anything in particular that you think I've left out or you want to add?
I just want to make one correction. Excuse me. So we did go back and look and the operating budget was actually twenty-four thousand in bus passes, not fourteen. So I just want to make sure that that was corrected. And the information that was sent out today by Gary to everybody is the updated information and request for information as a result of this meeting that we will be able to compile in about a week's time. So.
Do I do want to add to that, just to explain some new information? So at BNF requests, can we get more data on, on total number of a few different things? One was surveying families about their sort of desires and inclination to travel by bus if there are no fees. We haven't been able to do that in this short amount of time and also realize that we had to work, we have to work through some limitations because even if folks tell us who they are, we don't, at that point, did not have readily available how far they live. Okay. So, and also, so we will be doing a survey. But we have put together and Adam has done a great job in the last few days since that meeting giving some new information. So I want to just run over those because this is designed to have a discussion about this. So then you're prepared to think about it and then vote on June ninth at your next meeting. So let me just show a couple of things. These are in your packets, but I just want to put them on the screen. So you know what I'm referring to. The first one is I want to just highlight what we're proposing and that's in the first sort of two paragraphs of what we shared, we shared the same thing at BNF. And so what we're proposing and we'll show you the data to back it up in a moment is that we will provide transportation for anybody living K to eight, living one point five miles or over. Okay? And we do that to start this year. And so that would be provided starting, you know, in June. But then we would, because there's some unknowns about how many people would sign up. And we don't want to go to the additional bus, a hundred thousand dollars, additional driver, twenty-four thousand dollars without some prior planning. We don't have that in the budget now. So it's hard for us to go to the one point, the one point oh mile and above at this point. But the second paragraph is super, super important because what Adam has structured here and I really support it is that later in the summer, once we've gotten through most of the signups, we would, at that point, assess whether we could go further. Okay, without incurring significant additional costs, really thereby affecting the budget very negatively. So that's the, that's the proposal that we are putting forth. Let me just share some data that we, that for you to look at and discuss tonight. I'm not sure if this is big enough. Let me see if I can make it a little bigger. And this is also in your packet, but it's to show the, be able to show the public here. What we're showing you here is just sort of current status. You know, what that, you know, two miles and over was free for, we're talking last school year, because this year obviously was very different. Okay. So this is sort of currently what we do. And then compare that to what we were proposing. So whereas two point five, two miles and over was free for K to five, we'd go to one point five miles and over. Where two miles and over was free for, for sixth grade, we go to one point five miles and over. And then we're two miles and over was, we'd go down to one point five miles and over for, for those students. It also says here is a sort of a summary that that we review in August twenty twenty-one to see if we can go down to the mile limit. So that's just sort of the proposal done in a sort of table form. And then the last and most important piece, not just some of the data we followed up with, was looking at how many students were traveling in last school year by grade and what percentage of students, you know, were using transportation. Interestingly enough, those numbers went up this year. We have more students traveling by bus this year than we had sorry, last year, last school year, which is very surprising to me, honestly. But so these percentages could be used as we extrapolate, okay? In terms of what, you know, potentially we might see in terms of number of students, you know, riding. So down below here in the yellow is the distances about what Adam was able to do in the past a week that we, he wasn't able to do prior to this was get the exact numbers by, you know, through a download of how, how many kids live, at which distances by grade. So you see that if you go over here, the total students, these are total number of students and how they live, how far they, then you get into the proposal distance is seven hundred and seventy-two students live at one point five miles or above and K to five, K to five and six to eight, three hundred and thirty-eight students live beyond one point five miles at six to eight. What that means is that if all those students signed up, and of course, not all, not all of them would, perhaps, you know, forty percent, thirty percent would. We are, we need at seventy-seven, seventy-seven student capacity, we need seventeen buses at elementary and ten for, for the middle school. That's the most we could possibly ever use, obviously, just to be clear. Whereas now, you know, this year we had nine and seven. Okay. So that obviously would be a significant increase, but if we start taking percentages of that, we start to be able to size some of the issue at one point five and above. Okay? I still, I still, Adam and I both want to be conservative in this first step and this initial step. And then we would move towards whether it's in August or next year, you know, move towards, you know, decreasing that, that level, the distance rather, where we are free on transportation. So let me stop there. So I went through the data pretty quickly, but just wanted you guys to have an overview of that as you continue to look at it. But want to see if there are questions or clarifications or any discussion we can help with.
Hey, Samantha?
Thank you. So I just want to kind of bring this full circle to the, the first comment that we had from Mary Ann Boucher, you know, in relation to traffic and this feels like a possible solution, right? But nothing's going to happen quickly. And I do feel like part of this, part of the traffic issue and part of the bus issue is just people's personal choice on whether or not they want to put their kids on the bus, right? There's only so much that we can do. So I guess I'm wondering, do we know? You know, besides the, the fee, like what are people's hesitancy to take the bus and like what kind of? I, I think about this as like a campaign similar to what we need to do around attendance. Like, how do we get people excited about taking the bus? What do we need to do as a committee? And just as a community, as in a whole, as a whole, to really increase bus ridership? So, but unless we know what the hesitancy is, we can't really do that work. So I think just more information would be really helpful.
I think that would be a great question in our survey. When we do that, being new this year and coming in, I know that West Parish is, excuse me, an issue. The COVID has really thrown a lot of that off. So we have a lot more parents choosing to drive this year, unfortunately. So it's blown up that issue even more and it's become more of a attention now that there are even more parents driving this year than in the past years. So I think the, the focus on it this year is more how we solve that. I'm not, again, not quite sure, but I think that would be a great survey question. And I don't know what it was like in the past since I was not here. I don't know if it was more or less, or if somebody could answer that or how we would answer that. But I do know that this year there are a lot more parents choosing to drive district-wide because of the COVID restrictions and.
Can I just give, I think, can I just, I know Joel has a question, but I just want to give some context on the, on the history. I know a few years ago, we tried to do a lot of work on getting more families to be on the bus in the West Parish district specifically. And we did an analysis of how many kids and families chose the bus over two miles because over two miles, there was no fee. And the percent of those that drove were still pretty high. So we were trying to figure out, is the fee the barrier? Is it personal choice? So the fee did not appear to be a barrier, a large barrier at that time. So I can just give you that context.
Joel?
Thank you. I appreciate the committee is, is looking at this, you know, at least up in the right direction is a helpful step. But personally, I just want to reiterate, you know, I don't think we're going far enough with what's being looked at. You know, at minimum, to me as a school district, if someone, if we have a K to five student who wants to take the bus, you know, we should you know, we should, we should do what we can to get them on a bus. I know there are some very fortunate families where their position relative to their school, where their seven year old can safely and reliably walk to their elementary school. And, you know, I'm happy for them. But, you know, a lot of our seven year olds in the community would not qualify into the current regs and wouldn't qualify into the proposed regs and are not walking to school. It's just not going to happen, right? They're going to, we're forcing people into cars if we don't let these other students also have access to the bus. I appreciate the hurdles that that creates because you can't be adding an infinite number of stops. You have to figure out, you know, where you draw the line or how you funnel people into the route exists. But I would, I would hope the committee would would push forward and continue to make bus availability more inclusionary, especially for the K through five population. You know, those students, you know, in 2021 and beyond are not going to be walking to school unless they're one of the very fortunate families who live in close proximity to a school with a safe set of sidewalks to and from.
Samantha.
Joel, I guess I'm just wondering which subcommittee should this sort of really fall on, right? So there's the BNF subcommittee in relation to the cost, but like the strategizing around how to increase bus ridership, like who should be talking about this more? I think it needs to be a bigger conversation.
I mean, I know you asked me the question. I think that if another subcommittee is to pick it up, it still all falls back on what BNF has recommended to the full committee as far as the policy, you know, so if, for example, you know, programs picked it up and want to put this big push, it'd be pointless to make a big push for things that aren't available or vice versa, you know. So I think it's still falls to BNF and then the committee to make a decision as to what the rules are. And then maybe go to the programs or something else to to advocate or figure out advocacy. But I think BNF and the full committee have to figure out what we're comfortable doing as far as offerings before anything, any strategy or campaign can be assembled.
Yeah, I I agree. But I think we need to go back to what Kathy said is is find out even if 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 you have free transportation, would you take the bus? And some people are going to say no, you know. So. Melissa.
I just wanted to say, I sat out in front of the Veterans Memorial School today and observed the opening of school. And I was more than impressed with the amount of parents that walked their kids to school. We've talked about the health benefits of walking. And it's a special time in the morning, too, for parents to be with their kids. So I I just take a little a little step back from what Joel said. I don't want to, I don't believe it's a privilege that only privileged kids get to ride the bus. I mean, I think a lot of parents want their kids walking if they can and enjoy that part of being in the neighborhood with students too. So I guess I don't see it as a problem like Joel has stated. I I don't want to agree to the opinion that this is a huge issue and that underprivileged children aren't getting an opportunity to be on the bus because I don't, I don't see that as the case. Just from my experience watching schools open in the morning and seeing how happy kids are walking to school with their parents and their siblings.
I think what Joel was saying is that they were privileged because they could walk to school, but go ahead.
I took it as couldn't afford it, you know, and it's
No, 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 no. Just if you're lucky, so the vets community is lucky to live near their schools. A lot of vets kids can walk.
I thought you meant
If you're Plum Cove student, the chances that you live anywhere near Plum Cove are very little. And if you're a third grader, you know, who's not quite over the 1.5 miles, but you know, at 1.3, you're not walking to Plum Cove. It's just not happening, you know.
Well, and and that's our situation with West Parish. I mean, West Parish is surrounded by busy, unsafe streets. You know, that's why we offer free transportation. I mean, think about it, how many students live next to West Parish? Not many. So that's why you have an abundance of cars going there every morning, like every school in the United States, there is traffic at every school in the morning and the location of that school proves to be difficult with walkers. And so hence, we have a problem. So unless people want to get on the bus, then we're going to have traffic. And a lot of those parents like dropping their kids off at school. That's what we got from feedback a couple of years ago is parents wanted to drive their kids to school. It was either on their way to work or that's what they felt comfortable with. So I I I don't, I don't know what the solution is at, but we could just keep asking and surveying. But I don't know how much bigger of a conversation this can get other than looking at it from a budget point of view. An opportunity like we're doing now, seeing how many students would be on the bus. Is it practical that a bus stop is going to, a bus driver is going to stop at 50 different stops in the morning? Likely not. But I think building a finance is the right subcommittee to be discussing this because that's where that's what their purview is. I don't see it as any other topic to be discussed anywhere else.
Well, we're going to be looking to take action on this in two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
So Laura.
So I just wanted to say two things. One, just to Joel's point, Beeman Plum Cove, like there are plenty of schools here there that where children just cannot walk for the most part, unless they live in that vicinity. So you know, those schools have big populations coming from downtown. So I think that's what Joel meant. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, that there are a lot of schools where you just simply can't walk.
Well, they're like, it's like, it's a weird medium, right? Because if they're a mile and a half plus, we got a bus. And if they're three blocks away, they can walk. It's that
Right, no. Right, absolutely. The second part of this, to Melissa, what you were saying is we have an issue around traffic, but there's also an issue around emissions and just sort of, you know, cleaner technology and and so I think, I think there may be creative ways to start thinking about this, which are both how to alleviate traffic. And also, we want to improve, you know, we want to improve air quality in our in our community. There are plenty of places in the world where you're fined for driving and not for taking public transport. I'm not suggesting that we do that. But I am saying that there are other ways to start framing this.
I think Ben's, Ben's motto of go yellow to go green is should be ours. Samantha.
So that was sort of my point of, you know, where else do we have sort of these creative conversations around reframing this? Because it's not just a budgetary issue. That was sort of my, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, like it just feels like we need to have a more sort of in-depth conversation about how to problem solve this and reframe it. And it may be that the whole committee needs to do that. It just needs to be part of our agenda. But I don't think we need to necessarily go about this just from a budget.
I don't know if everybody got it, but I got an invitation to a webinar, Kathy, from the Safe Walks to to school. People from, it it was weird because it came from the DOT. And it was it wasn't labeled well when it, until he opened it up and saw what it was. Did, did everybody get that? Because that's, that's, I think it's coming up next week. I'll, I'll pass it on. Anything else? Oh, Adam.
I just had a couple of comments that I wanted to throw in here, too, is when we look at, for example, West Parish, I, we understand, and I know that that's been a huge issue. It was a prime example the other last week, right at school dismissal, dismissal time, the power lines came down, a pole that snapped right at the entrance to the the school. And so everything got rerouted. And we have a line of traffic and buses can't get in. But it's not necessarily just a parent traffic concern. We also have buses that have issues. We can't get all of our school buses that service that school in at one time. So we have to do shifts. So we have four or five buses up there at one time. We've got pathways buses, we've got YMCA buses, we've got our buses. They all don't fit in that little circle. So we have to stage our buses out on Essex Ave several days or most days to get them in there, in addition to driving up the wrong way of the driveway. So there's a lot of logistical things that I think we need to look at going forward. We have the same issues at Plum Cove. It's just Plum Cove is more setback and away from the main, the main roadway. Our buses wait in the parent line. If they're there at a certain time, they circle through the line and they get out. So I just think that in addition to getting more kids on the buses and we do see the cars, I think we need to look at logistically how we're going to get those cars through the school pickup line. We're, you know, looking at building a new school. We really should be looking at how go through that pickup line. And the other comment I just wanted to make is that if you look at the chart that I sent out, you'll notice that there are students this year, we had said we are going to provide transportation for two miles and over. I think between the mayor's office, the superintendent's office, and my office, we've done a pretty good job of getting any student who wanted to be on a bus, on a bus this year, two miles and under. We've even gone under a mile for some students. So I just want to make sure that that's out there that we, you know, there is a waitlist, obviously, for one school just because of capacity and we are looking at that changes for that next year, obviously. But any student that had requested transportation, we were able to do that with our current staffing levels as they are right.
Melissa.
I didn't realize my hand was still up, but since it is, I just wanted to ask you, I know you and City Councilor Sean Nolan from Ward Five were having discussions at some point about a potential fix at West Point. Is there anything you can update us on that? Or is it still, is there a potential of a project going on over there to relieve some of the ability to not have so many buses on site? Or is that conversation on past?
The conversation we've had and was a couple of years ago, we we, we looked at trying to expand the queue by running it out into the field, using some of the field because when we, when we did the design for that school, one of the priorities was that the field remain intact and and it is, it's underused, it's not used a whole lot. And and the thought was that the only way you can get, it's the only land that's accessible would be to run the, run it out and and but the problem is there's wet, there's a little bit of wetlands along that edge and all the utilities come in there. So those would have to be moved. So it's I think Sean came up with an, or Brad came up with a price of about a million dollars. And he, he keeps bringing it up. He's pushing for that, that we do that. But that's not going to make the bus circle bigger, but it will extend the the queues to get more cars in it at at pickup time. So I don't, but I don't think there's, there's any action on the city side that other than Sean reminding people that that's, that's the solution.
So should the school committee take a position on that? Or, I mean, I know there's a lot going on with city projects and and money is always a challenge. But I, every time I talk to Sean, which is very often, we discuss it, and it just seems like if he's discussing it, why isn't this conversation getting bigger or stopping?
Kathy.
I think I'd rather go back to go yellow to go green than to have a million dollars and less of a field in one of our areas of our city as a first try, right? I mean, I just think everybody is, you know, caring about the environment and we need to be consistent in our behavior and and you know, that's a community message, hopefully that Sean might help us, you know, convey as well. But I I do think it's, there's a lot of work to connect those dots for for more people.
I just, I I guess, and I understand completely, and I agree with you 100%, but if it's a solution that takes a lot of cars off the street on Concord Street and prevents accidents from happening or backups, I mean, it's, it's worth considering and and weighing the options and seeing if there is anything environmentally friendly that we could do to somewhat relieve the pressure over there.
Sophia.
Okay, well, we're sounding like a bunch of hypocrites. I don't mean to be rude, but you know what? We're talking about West Parish and they're talking about the field and you don't want to spend a million dollars. Yet then we're going to have the same traffic things that everyone's complaining on West Parish. So we need to solve, we need to work together. We need to figure out what we can do because by saying, well, people care about the environment and here we go on Webster Street and we've gotten all those emails. So we need to put what needs to be first is the priority of the children. What we can do, admit that the first mistake was done wrong, or whoever wants to admit it was done, the plan or whatever, how you didn't do it, doesn't matter. It causes traffic. So we need to come up with something. We try to figure out in the front, I believe in the front because of the whatever, I don't know, landfill sewer, whatever, but something has to be done. If this is really hazardous, they're not going to put, you know what, Sean and Senator Chaz's office with, I think the state, we're looking at West, I'm sorry, Essex Ave, as far as sidewalks, as far as putting lights, as far as doing something because that corner is dangerous. And some other concerns, there's not, you know, people can't walk to West Parish, even if they lived there because there was no sidewalks. So and the sidewalks, you know, even limited were overgrown with grass, the same thing, same thing where if you go by the, I keep calling it the heights, but on Essex Ave all the way down, there was just, it's not safe. So we need to figure out a plan. So you know what? Let's, let's figure out what we can do. We do have a traffic commission. I can ask Bob Ryan, I've yet, to tell you the truth, I've asked Bob Ryan. And my condolences to his family, he did lose his son, so I'll give him some time to look at some scenarios and some things that we can do. And we'll work on it. Okay, if this is going to make traffic, it's going to be easier. Don't forget RP money was coming and stuff and we can do something. And if it's, you know, we can do it, then you know what? Let's do it because safety, I don't want to hear this in five years or four years or three years always throwing up, well, we had no money or it was the mayor's fault or it was his fault or we didn't do something when someone gets hurt or nothing. Well, building a new school, we're going to have the same problems. So we're going to fix those too. We're going to work on it. We're going to fix it. So in three years, four years, we're here wherever and are saying, well, you didn't do nothing. So everyone has good advice and I like to Joe's consent, anyone that has some advice, because everyone says, well, I was an architect and that's no way that school is going to be built 70 million. Well, I know this and I'm going to, well, if people are out there and they have contractors, architects, everything else and whatever, if they want to send me a solution or send something, then we'll all look at it. But we can argue all night tonight and we can do whatever we want, we'll fix it. I know there's concerns, we'll do it. As far as rodents, we tried. That's one thing I can't get rid of. So you know what? We got to look at a possible new trailer. It's simple. It is money, it's facts, but let's, you know what? We, as Joel said, we never thought we'd get there in six years of doing the things that we are doing. Working together and trying to come with a solution is going to make all our students happier and our schools safer. Thank you.
Joel.
Thanks. I was going to make this referral out and Brenda, you know, section 12 anyway, so it ties right into this. I was thinking the other day, you know, about how to, about the West Parish problem in particular, now we're talking about it, if I just make this out. So if, if any of you has ever gone to pick up somebody from Logan, traffic doesn't back up and people aren't queued up moving the flow. And why is that? Because until the people are ready to go, you're not allowed to stop. If you are like picking someone up from, you know, Gate D and you show up 10 minutes before that plane lands, a state trooper or TSA comes up over and politely tells you, hey, you got to keep moving. You do another lap around the around the airport or you wait in the cell phone line, whatever. And so West Parish, the silver lining to its location is that between, I think it was now called Exit 53, which was 14 and 54A, which was 13, you have that loop potential. And so I want to make a referral to BNF that we schedule, that we invite a member of the traffic, the head of the traffic commission, our Ward Five counselor, maybe a police officer, and we discuss whether or not it'd be possible to, to instead of, you know, trying to make it easier for a million cars to show up at West Parish, say, hey, listen, we're not going to park on Concord Street, period. If you show up before you can fit into the queue, we're sending you down to exit older 14, you can circle down to exit 13 and come back and try again. And we're just not going to have it anymore. And that way, traffic will continue to move along Concord Street. And when the, when the site is ready for cars, to accept cars, it moves pretty quickly. So if parents want to show up a half an hour before school dismisses, they'll be doing, you know, the little mini Gloucester 500 around these exits until they get a chance to pull onto the site. It works at the airport, you know, and again, I'm, I'm big into not trying to get easier for more cars. I'm trying to make it encouraging people to stop showing up so early. Stop sharing with such great numbers. And this seems like a very reasonable, justifiable change if it's, you know, if it actually, you know, is checked off by the people who know much better than I as to how traffic flows. So they'd make the referral out to BNF to discuss that as an option.
Okay, good. Sophia, still have your hand up?
Sorry, and thank you, Joel. And see, there you go.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we took this up a little bit out of order. Kathy, do you have anything else to report from BNF?
I do, actually. I will say that we received an end of year financial report, which is the report that's required to certify how we do our operating expenses per pupil, and determine state aid, and determine if the city meets net school spending requirements. And this year, the report came back with no findings. So that's excellent, that our procedures are acceptable and, and the way they should be. In terms of fiscal year, this current fiscal year, we continue to be on budget, under budget. We're, you know, still having less spending in terms of substitutes and things. So things are pretty much consistent, same, same explanation in terms of this particular year in our budget. Everybody should know that tomorrow, we have the city council building and finance budget meeting, where they will ask questions or review the school department budget. So, so that's on everybody's list. And we have as an action item, the statement of interest. So should we do that after we move on to action?
Well, it's the next thing, action's the next thing. So if you're through with everything else on BNF, let's, let's do the statement of interest.
Okay, so as Ben had described during the last meeting with our capital planning and capital needs, one of the items is the replacement of windows at O'Malley that are single pane. So at our building and finance subcommittee, we need, the MSBA requires that we do a formal vote to say we are going to submit a statement of interest. And the reality is, we probably won't get in in the first round, but we can be hopeful and optimistic. But we definitely want to say, please, we do need help replacing these windows. It's time. So we made a recommendation to the full school committee that we, that we have submitted a statement of interest for the O'Malley windows, windows project. So now, you want me to read the language for the reason, the requirement?
We do have to use their language, so yes.
You have that there.
Okay, so the motion is that it be resolved, Gloucester, I guess this is, having convened in an open meeting on May 26, 2021, prior to the closing date, the school committee of the city of Gloucester, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated, someone tell me what the date is, that we're going to date it?
June 1st.
June 1st, for the O'Malley Innovation Middle School located at 32 Cherry Street, Gloucester, Massachusetts. Is this where the project gets described, Ben?
Sorry, yes, um, yeah, and that would be, yes.
Can I just interject? Yeah, the date is May, May 27th, instead of June 1st.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future to replace the single pane windows with energy efficient windows to decrease energy related costs. The repair project falls under priority number five, labeled replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems windows. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an X application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city of Gloucester to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And I so move.
Second, is there any discussion? I think the mayor said that the city council voted this last night, because they have to vote it also.
They did, and I signed it today.
Okay, so it's, the train's leaving the station, and we need to vote this, I guess.
It's, it's a pretty slow train, just to reiterate what Kathy's.
Yeah, it's, but they have their, they have their rules.
If anyone from O'Malley is listening, I don't, I don't want them to get too excited that the windows will be replaced this summer. We won't hear about the, if we're approved till much later this year, and then it would be, you know, but, but it is unlikely it will be approved on the first year. That typically doesn't happen, but we do need to start applying and apply every year until we do get approved.
Yeah. I, I don't think we'll even know by the end of this year whether, whether we've been approved. It's usually in the late winter that they, they send out the approvals.
Right.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Maria.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Taken?
Yes, and never say never, you just don't know things, you just say yes.
And Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and we'll move on to our other action items. We have three grants from the Gloucester Education Foundation. The first one is for $1,520, $21.75 for the K5 Elementary Remote Academy Enrichment Coordinator. And I so move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, what, what, I mean, explain so people understand what that is.
Okay.
Explain if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
We've been all year long for K5 Remote Academy. We've been doing every Wednesday afternoon an enrichment program for all grades, and we usually have about three different things going on. And it was just very challenging for me to manage all of those at the same time. So we, with support of GEF, hired an enrichment coordinator just to help out finding new programs to do every Wednesday afternoon, as well as helping out with managing those. And Roseanne Vidal's been working for the last month and a half, and I just have to take the opportunity and say she's been doing a fantastic job bringing all kinds of great opportunities to the kids. So it's a great program, I'd like to see us continue next year.
Well, Greg, I wanted you to do that, because I've gotten a text, and I've gotten emails earlier, says, just so you know, my grandchildren have an outstanding area in remote. Greg Bach did an outstanding job, it's been sensational, can't say enough. So thank you. I just wanted to make sure everyone else knew. Thank you very much.
Very nice of you, thank you.
Thanks. Any further discussion? So could we have a roll call vote, Maria?
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Taken?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, carries unanimously. The next one is for $4,500 for mindfulness toolkit for elementary and middle schools, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Greg, do you want to explain what that is?
I'm afraid I can't on that.
I suppose it's for, for materials, correct?
I think Ben knows more about that one than I do.
Okay. You're muted, man.
I can't say that I do, unfortunately. But I mean, it's, it's some curriculum, also supplies in terms, in terms of videos. And then, and, and lessons for students at elementary, middle. So it's sort of a, a variety of resources, and then also videos for, to lead to lessons in, in our classes. This is, this is, you know, this, and also the yoga and wellness is, is one of the pieces in terms of relating to earlier conversation around, you know, recovery, you know, to help kids with anxiety, with stress, and, and not kids who are like just suffering openly about it, but, but just, you know, just to, to address the healthy practices and helping teach kids healthy practices related to addressing anxiety or stress, or just, you know, being effective throughout the day.
Okay, so just, just so, just to remind people that the Gloucester Education Foundation, any teacher can apply for a grant. They, we have to approve them, but they're not coming out of one central place. It's not like a, the school district is coming up with a list of grants. These are all coming from, from individual teachers or groups of teachers. And, and in one case, a student received a grant this year. So we're not always on top of every little thing that people have asked for, so.
And if this was a student who brought this forward, and the student has concerns, I'm sorry, speaking out through the chair, concerns about anxiety and about other things, that goes to show you that, first of all, this concerns, and, and with, especially with the COVID. And Ben, well Superintendent Loomis has been working on trying to get some more, I think actually Greg did through grants to get some more help, especially during the summer school. You know, because I said, well, maybe we can approach a grant together that we had that we needed to spend through HUD. And actually, Greg was right on top of it, he already went through grants. And I'm trying to work with the CFO and trying to find someone in, because Mr. Loomis said, I don't want KZAC money for a therapist, I want a permanent therapist. I don't want someone to leave after a certain time, and there's no more money, and there's no funding. So we're working on that. And we hear the parents, and a student to come forward, congratulations and kudos to that student to bring awareness to all of us. And Samantha will fill you in on everything, because she's great at that too, so thank you. But we will be working on that, because it does concern us all, so thank you to that student.
Any other discussion? Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
And Ms. Watson?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. We have one more, and that has already been discussed a little bit, is $3,000 for yoga and wellness at elementary schools, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I go?
What? Can you go?
Oh, can you go to the yoga?
Okay.
I think we should start our meetings with yoga.
Yeah, Laura.
Question.
Which elementary schools is this at?
Bach, can you help us out with that?
I'm really sorry.
Was doing it for a while.
It's in the packet somewhere.
No, I'm, 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 I'm looking at it.
I don't think, I don't see it, I could be wrong here.
It's not, it's not, it's not said on the actual form here.
I know I donated yoga mats to East Gloucester last two years ago.
You know, there's, there's a lot of yoga, what, what's going on? I'm sorry, we don't know this off, off the top of our head. But we'll, we'll, I'll find out, and then email the, the committee about it, specifically what it's for, it could be across different schools.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy? Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
And Ms. Watson?
Yes.
It passes unanimously, thank you very much. We're not going to take up item C, because it has not been ratified by the union yet. We will take that up at our next meeting. And we've already done the trans, the discussion about transportation waiver. So we have these Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building Committee update. The, you had a forum last week, Ben?
My gosh, yes, we did, actually, I forgot about that. Had a neighborhood, neighborhood forum for the, you know, folks who live in the veteran school area. We reached out by regular mail, and also through some signage. And I can't remember how many people, I honestly, there were about 40 people who attended, you know, beyond the panelists. The main, the, the two primary focuses of the meeting were to give the neighbors an update on, you know, the design, and then, and, and how the, what it would look like, both inside and outside. And then also help them understand just the process around demolition and construction, and what the construction management team will do in terms of safety, minimizing noise, of minimizing impact on neighbors, on minimizing, you know, when deliveries, explaining when deliveries happen, also making sure that those on the call, and that the neighbors will have an ability to contact the construction management team when they're, they have questions or concerns about anything that's going on, on, on the site. And then also make sure they know how to get more information about the building project, and also sign up for updates as well. There's also a Q and A time, which focused on a variety of things, including traffic and arrival and dismissal, and different design elements, and height. So that was, that was quite good, I thought, in terms of folks get, we had a couple of city councillors on the, on the call as well, which is helpful. So that went quite well to have that. We'll have more of those as we progress in the project. Also then, do you want me to keep going about zoning? Or Kathy, or Jonathan, you want to look at?
Go ahead. Tomorrow, tomorrow, there's some site visits for the city councillors, because it's before P and D, the variance that's needed for the height. What else, Ben?
Just that, that, that permitting process is, you know, continues. And councillor Gilman has been very helpful in terms of organizing and getting together input and questions from community members that they have around height as part of that process. And she's been very responsive, and so has our team in terms of, you know, no, using, you know, tape on the light poles to show where the height is. And that process, like I said, continue with a site, another, the second site visit tomorrow. It's the second round of site visits, I should say. And then, I think, I want to say, June, the P and D committee will meet next week. And in terms of their public hearing, I believe, you know, the next meeting, on their committee meeting, and then ultimately, the city council have a public hearing on the matter.
Right. And we're, we're still under review at the Conservation Commission. They've, I don't know that they've received their report from their, their third party review. But that will come up at the next meeting, that's postponed, because it wasn't done. I, I, I think that's in the beginning of June. People, I, I did get one reference, that people are getting letters from a company, and I should have the name of it in front of me, but I don't. That is, we, the city has hired to go and take pictures of their property. Should anything happen during construction, either caused by vibration, or although there's none planned, by, by, because they have to dynamite rocks or something. So there's, what they do is they go around, they notify people, and they, we hire a company to go out and take pictures of their property to verify that it, when they make a claim, that it's something that has happened since the, you know, during the, during the process of construction. So people are getting, getting letters, asking them when they can come and take pictures of the house. We had a review by the, the design development submission. We had reviewed with MSBA last week, and everything was, is pretty much in order. There were a couple of little things that they wanted further explanation about, but nothing that was just, you know, was of any real concern.
One, one example of that, just so people understand, the sort of the, the One, one, one example of that, just so people understand the sort of the, the sort of low level of this is, uh, we moved a special education room. Uh, just, just like, you know, um, uh, a couple of special offices to make room, uh, uh, to make room for a conference room. So it wouldn't have a, a, a beam in the middle of it. Um, and just that reordering of the special education rooms needs to be. Uh, approved by the Department of Elementary, second, secondary education. So MSBA reminded us to do that process with them. So is that sort of, you know, very, I mean, sort of, um, almost administrative details that the, that the, um. MSBA was working through with us last Friday. So, but just we continue in partnership with them, uh, continue to get feedback from them. And work with them closely on this. Um, and that was just one example of that meeting last week on, on design development.
Melissa?
I have a question on the height. So, um, one of the reasons I went down to veterans this morning, besides observing the, um, student drop off. Was because, um, I thought I heard Councilon Gilman say that there was a way to go down and see what the height of the building was going to be. And I'm looking out in the field for things I didn't think to look on the tele. Just heard you say, um, that's where the markings were. So my question is, when I was there, I was observing, you know, all the buildings that are on Webster Street. And on the corner of, of Friend and Webster Street and realized that a lot of those houses, which are apartment buildings. Are, um, three and four stories high if you include their attics. So, um, like the building, the gray one on the corner. Is a four story building. And I think two buildings before that is a three story, another three story. And then, of course, right at the beginning of Webster Street, you have another fourth story building. So my, because I didn't see the telephone pole markings, because I was looking for something else. Is the school building going to be taller than the top height of those buildings at the top of the hill? Because it sounds like we're building something so large that it's not going to fit in the neighborhood. But yet, if you really look at all the buildings on Webster Street, they are tall buildings on top of a hill. And I'm seeing that the school is down lower. So I'm just trying to figure out, is this school going to be really that large that it sticks out? Or is it going to blend in the neighborhood because of the height of other buildings?
Um, at P and D, um, at the first meeting, they, they had a presentation and they essentially showed the height of the building. Well, you can't hear me?
I can hear you now. I lost you. I don't know if anyone else did.
At, at P and D, um, Doran Whittier presented a presentation which, you know. I don't know whether we have it on the website yet, um, but it essentially showed the, um, the height of the building compared to the height. Of the buildings in, in the community. And it's lower, it's going to be lower than the, that gray building on the corner of Friend Street. Um, and, um, it's. Down on the corner of, of, uh, Webster and Eastern Avenue is, is almost the same height. It's down lower to begin with, so it'll be higher than that because it's, it's further up the hill. So there's, there's, um. Uh, you know, it, it's, it's not, the height is not out of line, um, for, uh, the, the neighborhood.
So I guess my question is, if, if we're going before zoning because of the height of the building, I mean, we're looking for a waiver?
We have to, we have to get a, a variance.
A variance? So how are those other buildings there? Did they, they lessen the variance since the other buildings were built?
In all likelihood, they're called pre-existing non-conformity structures before zoning cared how high a building was. Those things where I built, you know, a hundred fifty years ago. I bet that brick building probably needed something, but the, the houses were probably all there before zoning ever cared about maximum height.
It just seems, it seems like they're making, uh, someone's making a big argument about the, the height of it. But yet, if you really walk up and down that street and get a feel for how tall the buildings are, they had the apartment buildings. It just doesn't make too much sense to me, but.
Well. You know, people.
I was just looking to find out if they were going to be lower because I missed the telephone pole market. So I'm happy to hear that.
It's, it's on the light poles, you know, that light up the field.
Okay.
Yeah, the one right behind the playground, as you look down into the site, the playgrounds, you know, on your left, the buildings on your right. And there's a telephone pole kind of triangulated between the building, the playground and the, the back parking lot. That one has black tape around it.
Okay, anything else, um, anybody wants to bring up before we adjourn? Melissa?
So I have a couple of things. Um, first, can, can we get confirmation that the, um, the safety entrances? You know, to review, review that topic again. There was a comment made not too long ago, which made sense that, um, the take home pay. After being a substitute for seventy-five dollars a day, doesn't even make minimum wage. So, um, if we can just look at that issue, um, I know we don't have a lot of money floating around, but we do need to get substitutes. And then.
Jonathan, I'm just noticing that Maria is not here.
Maria's not here.
Is that a problem?
Yeah, I had gotten kicked out for a while too. She says that he's having trouble as well.
It, it is recording again.
It's recorded and Jonathan's a host.
Yeah, and I'm a host. I don't, I don't think it's a problem.
Yes, there's recording up in the top of my screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is recording.
But it's up for a little bit.
Recording, so.
I think we should try to finish up because it looks like we're having some problems here.
Yes, yes. Okay, are you?
Then the other issue was just, if we can talk about the next meeting is June thirteenth, is a new state holiday. Even the city council adopted it last night. I just have to see what, like.
June nineteenth.
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 Isn't it called June thir-
No, June nineteenth. It sounds like it's the June thirteenth, but it's not.
Yeah, Juneteenth or whatever it is. So I mean, I know a lot of our workers don't work past June nineteenth, but it is a state holiday. So just to find out what the impact, if anything, is, um, to the school district now that the city council adopted it. And whoever else adopted it, the governor.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right.
It's a, it's a holiday for us and we have it off.
Okay.
Please, I need an extra day. Leave me alone.
I guess it's Saturday this year, so it's not much of an issue or Sundays.
No, but we'll have to give it the, the first day or the next day after, if it's, if it's, if it's a state holiday. So we're working on it.
Okay, um, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and I'm going to take real, roll call vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes.
Laura? Laura, you, you're not moving.
Frozen.
Yeah, frozen. Well, we're still.
Safafi says yes. Good night.
Good night, and, uh, I say yes. So, uh, it carries, um, five in favor and, uh, two absent.
Laura, we're leaving. You can't hear us or see us, but it's okay. Have a good night. I like your smile. It's frozen.
And Maria said, Maria said she tried to get in but couldn't get back in.
Okay.
It's all right.
We're just going to shut it down. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.